Putting them on the perimeter, I'll leave them more or less on the perimeter than attached to the island. That would also help, but it also does, it does not carve out.
Nothing better to do than that?
And, um...
Tell you what, I got a seat.
Couple others.
You got a seat?
I'll show you and I think that, you know, you go just in.
All right, all right.
Previously dated.
Well, you don't have anything on there, so it should be a breeze.
In action space. And, uh, and I think if we further adjust those.
You can touch that, I thought that was.
Essentially solved.
Hold everyone's.
Yeah.
Putting things.
It's 5:30, so we'll call to order this meeting for Monday, October 7th, 2019. Carl, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Rife.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonus.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shawman.
Here. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No one has signed up for the open forum to my knowledge, so we'll move on to the consent calendar routine city business.
Minutes.
Oh, trying to get through this quick, huh? Maybe a little bit too quick today. So I'm gonna need a, uh, a motion to approve last week's minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Johnson and a second from Rux. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion does carry. Now, we will move on to the consent calendar routine city business items A through F. Can I get a motion to pass those consent calendar items?
Moved to approve.
Second. A motion from...
Could I ask a question, please? Carl, there was a additional advertisement for the public safety building that should be on there as well?
That's item.
Yeah, that's item E there.
What's on there?
An add-on.
You might be looking at it.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, thank you.
Sounds good. Have we got any other questions as it relates to these items? And that's what you were looking for, Robin?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, sounds good. Then I will take a vote on that, all in favor of passing these routine consent calendar items. Say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion does carry. The next item we will move to is new business. We've got the appointment of Mark Hoven as Parks, Rec and Forestry Director as of November 18th, 2019. Possible approval confirming the appointment of Mark as Parks and Rec Forestry Director as of November 18th, with a starting annual salary of $90,194.52 as recommended by the Parks and Rec Board. We've got Mark here and we've got Matt here. Would you guys like to make your way to the, to the podium?
Mr. Prane, thanks for coming. Tell us a little bit about your decision or any other comments that you'd like to make.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, Matt Prane, uh, I am currently the Park Board President. I've been on the Parks Recreation and Forestry Board for a little over eight years. Um, as many of you know, we accepted the resignation slash retirement, uh, of our current Director, Doug Johnson, a few months ago. Uh, Doug has been an organized, thoughtful, creative and passionate leader of the Parks Recreation Department for almost 40 years. Uh, replacing him was never going to be an easy task. I just want to take a quick moment to say thank you to Doug. He couldn't be here tonight, um, for everything he's done for this community. It's, the list is long. Um, and I hope, uh, as council members, you two might be able to take the moment to, uh, also thank him before his retirement. Uh, he's been a phenomenal director to work with and has made being a board member quite a pleasure. Myself, along with City Manager Lynn Lander, HR Director Jill Moore, Parks Board VP David Sandvig, and Parks Board Secretary Doug Farron, had the difficult task of selecting our next Director. Uh, we received applications from about 35 qualified individuals from in and around the area to different parts of the country. We narrowed that down to eight candidates that we chose to interview. Three incredibly talented folks from outside of Aberdeen and uh, five internal candidates that, uh, I think you as a city council should be very proud to have working for you in this community. Each one of these eight candidates were qualified and highly considered for the position. Today, uh, as required by section 36 dash 31 of the city code, uh, I'm seeking the city council's approval for the appointment of Mr. Mark Hoven as the next Director of the Parks Recreation and Forestry Department. Uh, Mr. Hoven graduated from SDSU with a degree in park management and he served as Park Superintendent here in Aberdeen since 1982. Uh, and prior to that, served as manager of the Riverside Cemetery for three years. And if my math is correct...
You need to do the math.
No, I won't. Uh, I was quite young when you started your career.
[laughing]
Uh, Mark, uh, brings a wealth of experience and knowledge to the position and has done an outstanding job in his current role. Uh, we as a board are very excited about this appointment and we know Mr. Hoven will bring that same passion he has for his park division to the entire department. Uh, I guess...
I moved to approve.
Second. Would you say some words?
Uh-huh.
Would you care to say some words, Mark, on your nomination?
Yeah, just, I'm grateful for his, for his kind words and, and, um, looking forward to serving the community as a Director and working closely with you and the board and the citizens and, uh, um, yeah, and the staff that we have. We have an outstanding staff over there, so, um, really excited for the challenge that lays before me. So, um, ready to go to work. Thank you for your support.
I have to make sure to teach someone everything you know about mosquitoes.
That's no joke. He's hosting the annual mosquito convention this week, so most of us probably wouldn't even realize that such a convention would, would exist.
I'm going to pass on my ballot.
[laughing]
Thank you.
So we've got a motion from Ronain and a second from Johnson, was that you?
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good. Um, I'll, uh, kick it over to a roll call vote. Carl, would you do that for us?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does pass. Mark, congratulations. Good work.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Are you gonna continue to wear the hat to work now?
No, I can pull it again.
[laughing]
Five oh five. Thanks again. Thank you.
The next item that we've got to discuss is the appointment of Tara Hyble to the Aberdeen Parks Rec Board for a three-year term ending in June 30th, 2022. The possible approval and appointment of Tara Hyble to the Annual Park Recreation Board for a three-year term ending June 30th. Um, can I get a motion to make that appointment?
So moved. Okay.
Motion from Rux and a second from Olson. Is there anyone who has anything to add to that conversation? Otherwise, Carl, give us a roll call vote on that appointment, would you?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does pass. Next, we've got ordinance 191002, ordinance amending the city code regarding required sidewalks, possible first reading. Brett, what can you tell us about that? You're not the guy, Robin?
City manager.
City manager, geez, all over the place. Well, I'd written down Brett, so...
Well, actually, Brett, Robin and Ron all participated in what we proposed to you this evening, and so it was a team effort. And if you look at section 46 of the code ordinances dealing with sidewalks, was probably adopted back in the 1990s. A prior city commission, not council, recognized the benefit and need to install sidewalks. Likewise, they understood from a compliance perspective, the best time to install sidewalks was during the construction build-out time period. So after looking at this ordinance, we're recommending, uh, at least two changes and we're open to other suggestions and, uh, Ron may have other comments as well as Robin and Brett, but the two changes that we want you to consider this evening is change number one is adwordage, whereas the city engineer determines if spaces available within the right-of-way to construct a sidewalk. Uh, there are places throughout the community that sidewalks could not be constructed, and we think the city engineer should make that determination. Uh, the next change that we want the council to consider is eliminating exemptions but continuing long-term extensions. We believe because there'll all be, always be changes with the growth of the city, that we do not want to be in a position where we grant exemption and because of the exemption, it creates a problem for the future. If in fact you want to do a long-term extensions, so be it, but we believe that exemption language should be deleted because of circumstances under, not under our control. It could be the split of a lot, it could be a rezone, it could be a multitude of different things. And so we think exemption is not appropriate, especially when you look at a growing city as a whole.
So Robin, uh, as it relates to the circumstance that kind of brought all this about, there's a gentleman who's building an apartment complex on the west side of Roosevelt and south of the 6th Avenue, maybe six or eight blocks. How is this, uh, gonna have a direct impact on that guy's situation?
Well, and he and I have talked about it. His first question was since I, I would have the ability to say whether something is constructable within the right-of-way or not, uh, he wanted to know if, if I felt that it was constructable, and it is. There is a way to get a sidewalk on the right-of-way, uh, even though it would have to shift when it gets to the north property line of that particular property. So it is constructable. Uh, from our standpoint, it would not help him in that case because curb and gutter already exists adjacent to that property. And, and what it boils down to is, um, you might be able to come up with some way to grant that extension, but at some point, somebody's gonna end up needing to put that sidewalk in at a later time. And that's where I think, um, now's the time to take care of it so that somebody else isn't stuck with a bill that they're not expecting, I guess, so to say. So it doesn't really help him, is what it boils down to.
Sure. And so, do you have an idea of about how many exemptions have been, have been granted?
There really aren't any exemptions. I would say there are some that, there, there are probably a dozen to 20 maybe that have not been done for a variety of reasons over... I can think of one exemption, excuse me, that, that commission did grant years ago, and it was because of the exact situation where it was not really constructable. There were utilities in the way. And that's, that's why that language was put in. There was one that, that commission did grant an exemption at that time.
So the process with the ordinance as it stands, as well as with the ordinances, if it's amended here, today for that gentleman will be, he'll come, appeal his case, and then the council itself can create an extension for him or maybe an exemption?
Curb and gutter already exists on that particular property, so I don't think there's an exemption or an extension to be granted at this point.
Sure, okay.
Would that be accurate, Ron?
That's correct.
With existing language and modified language, so we've changed nothing there.
Right. A couple of other people had reached out to me, kind of questioning the situation, and so that's why I did a little bit of digging on it. People that didn't have, there were kind of islands of no sidewalks in the middle of the block, and my understanding was, it, this wouldn't affect their situation one way or the other. They may still have to build a sidewalk. They may have, even if this doesn't change or if it does change, they may still have to buy, build a sidewalk in the right circumstances.
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? Kind of dominate this conversation. Can I get a motion to pass the first reading of this ordinance then?
Moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Bunsonus and a second from Johnson. Any other discussion points that anyone wants to make? Otherwise, Carl, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. The next we've got is ordinance adopting the recodification of the Aberdeen City Code, possible first reading ordinance, 191003. Ron, what have you got for us on that?
Thank you, Mayor. I had warned the council early, early in 2019 that we would be starting this process of looking at, to recodify our entire code. And, uh, just for point of reference, in the future, we can officially refer to it as the Aberdeen City Code. It's no longer going to be revised ordinances of the City of Aberdeen. But I wanted to, uh, alert the council to, to the process, which involved, uh, a legal review by the Municipal Court Corporation that does these nationally. I was very impressed, by the way, with that legal review. Um, I had, I had entertained the idea of trying to put together a group to do that, and I'm glad I did not do that, because that, that was an impressive process. Uh, and in the process, we also, uh, ran some of the suggested changes by several of our department heads, got some really good feedback. Um, I will, I am very pleased that we're, we are at, where we at with this right now, because I thought we'd be into 2020 before we'd be doing this, but I am requesting that the council approve this ordinance adopting the code. There is one small, small change that we'll be making. We had to contact them today, because we saw that they made a mistake in one of the proofs. Um, but, uh, we do need the, uh, this formal adoption, enacting ordinance, so that we can complete the process and make this our official code book.
Move approval.
Second.
And as far as you can tell, could you, is there a synopsis of the particular changes? You mentioned that obsolete language, you mentioned, um, referral to state law that may have changed.
I left on my desk upstairs a, a large black binder that I have of 600 pages of the proofs. Uh, probably a third of those have some type of, of edit to them. Um, some are, are as simple as a missing, uh, section symbol for a statutory reference. Others, and I will use, uh, uh, my police chief as an example, we went through and, um, in the vehicle and offenses section, I think which is chapter 52, uh, we parrot, uh, the maximum weight statutes that this, that the state has for over, overweight, uh, loads. And we, we were able to just basically delete all those and just reference the statute. So that's an example of some of those types of changes that we were making. Um, uh, there, there is nothing that we did that changes the substance of any of the code, but what we did is we, we were able to whittle down and, and delete a lot of, uh, superfluous language. And there were several areas where, over time, the, the cross-references to other codes had either been outdated or had lost their, their pagination because of the changes, so we were able to fix those kinds of things.
So nothing that a city citizen will be able to do today, they will not be able to do when this thing passes?
True, that's correct.
Sounds good. We've got a motion. I've lost track of the motion. It was a motion from Rux and a second from Olson, Mike Olson. Carl, can I get a roll call?
No, I do have a question, if I may, Mayor.
Oh.
I, I know this is intended to, among other things, correct some typographical errors, but we are adopting an ordinance that I think in section four has two typographical errors. Would we like to correct those?
I wouldn't. I will correct those at the second reading.
Do you see him?
In my defense, the adopting ordinance that we're looking at here is what was provided to me by the code corporation.
Well, should we amend it now or are we...
Yeah, why don't you, can you identify those?
Sure. In, uh, section four, on line four, after the word misdemeanor, there is a comma that ought to be a period, since the next, since it starts with a next, since there's a sentence afterward. Do you have that, Carl? And then on line seven, there is what appears to be an ellipse, but I think it's intended to be one, only one period. It's two periods. And so we would delete the second period of this, of this ordinance, correcting the, uh...
They're just creating future work for themselves.
[laughing] Maybe so. So I will tell...
You can't have this, it's got two periods.
You know, it was interesting in this process, because, because these kinds of things occur occasionally that don't even merit necessarily an amendment. These are things that it would be nice to be able to, just when you see them, to fix them. Um, because again, it's clear that these are not, these are, these are nothing but, but typographical errors in the, by the printer typically.
I agree.
Um, but I suppose to be official, there should probably be a motion to amend.
So mine is a motion to amend.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion from, Remley and a second from Rux on that. Uh, can I get a roll, or actually, is all in favor of that amendment? Say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. That motion does carry. Is there any other conversation to be had around this codification? Otherwise, Carl, can I get a roll call vote for first draft approval?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a request to surplus a 2014 Chevy Camaro to the Steve Lust Automotive for a trade-in and a 2019 Chevy Camaro for the Police Department. Possible approval to surplus the vehicle requested by the Police Department. Dave McNeil, would you say a few words on that, please?
Certainly, thank you. Uh, Steven Lust Automotive has given us this opportunity to upgrade, uh, to continue to use a car that we normally use for our DARE educational program, community policing programs, and, uh, it seems to be a fit for certain situations on, when we implement our community policing program. So, I'm very happy for the support that we get with all the business owners in Aberdeen and Steven Lust as well.
Moved to approve.
Second. Got a motion from Remley and a second from Ronain. Is anyone, any questions for the police chief? Otherwise, Carl, would you give me a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a request to surplus a 2014 Chevy Camaro to the Steve Lust Automotive for a trade-in and a 2019 Chevy Camaro for the Police Department. Possible approval to surplus the vehicle requested by the Police Department. Dave McNeil, would you say a few words on that, please?
Certainly, thank you. Uh, Steven Lust Automotive has given us this opportunity to upgrade, uh, to continue to use a car that we normally use for our DARE educational program, community policing programs, and, uh, it seems to be a fit for certain situations on, when we implement our community policing program. So, I'm very happy for the support that we get with all the business owners in Aberdeen and Steven Lust as well.
Moved to approve.
Second. Got a motion from Remley and a second from Ronain. Is anyone, any questions for the police chief? Otherwise, Carl, would you give me a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Ape-steen.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the city managers report. Lynn, what have you got for us today?
Uh, I got two items that I want to make reference to for the future. Uh, these two items are reviewing, uh, promotion materials. I would like to schedule that for October 21st, and then I talked to Parks Recreation Forestry, and they are willing to do a landscape presentation on October 28th. And so, if there's no conflict at those dates, I'll continue to work forward and place them on the agenda.
Sounds good to me. Does anyone have a problem with that?
You probably don't want me on both these, then, right? 21st or 28th?
Per Corley report?
I was, I was hoping to thank you, but...
No.
[laughing] Is it okay if we slide into the next one? Is that...
Uh, I don't know where you're gonna fit in, to be honest with you. Uh, next meeting, I think it's gonna be a long meeting. The 21st is gonna be a long meeting. I could see where the 1st on November might work out well.
Is that okay with you guys?
Sounds good to me. It's a little bit like when the kids discover their teacher's having a divorce and they never have to turn in their homework then.
Okay, uh, while you're here, let's tentatively set that then for November 4th.
It's been, it's been...
Yep.
Sharp around here lately. Does anyone have anything to add before we motion to adjourn?
Do you have some?
I don't.
Oh, I do. So, this past Wednesday, um, the Aberdeen American News asked me if I had a conflict of interest on an issue with a, um, demolition permit that we approved back in June. Immediately, um, sent that to Attorney Wager, and we had a discussion, and I do have a conflict of interest. This falls under section 14G, which talks about, um, current clients and, um, not participating or voting on those items. Uh, went to Carl and asked him to run a, um, list of payments that were made to my client, uh, some of my clients or all my clients, if there was any, and there were three. And I have a conflict of interest there, because I participated in the, uh, bill paying vote, uh, at the end of the agenda. Um, this is, uh, embarrassing. This is an oversight on my part, sloppy, um, work on my part. I need your assistance, and that is, what should I do? So, the one thing that, uh, was suggested to me by Attorney Wager was to file a complaint on myself to the Board of Ethics and have them come with, um, any result that needs reprimand, fine, removal, whatever, uh, may come. So I'm looking for, um, your, your guidance on that.
Under state law, wouldn't that nullify his vote on that if it's found that it is a conflict?
Correct. Under current, under state law and our current, current ordinance, that, that would be the, the remedy for that matter, would be to nullify his vote on that particular, uh, on the demolition permit, for example.
So, isn't that the answer?
I don't know. I'm, I want you to know that I don't believe that I'm above any policy or ordinance, and if there needs to be, uh, more stringent whatever towards me, then I'm accepting of that.
How, how do we nullify a vote, Ron? Have you looked at that? Can we just...
Um, I, they say it's the sole legal remedy. I would think then that that would be, a nullification would be, would be through court, if that's what it came down to it.
Well, is it, well, is that something we have power to do? Can we just adjust the, the votes on those three issues, um, retroactively?
I don't know that we could reach back and amend those minutes, those votes to do that. I think we would have to...
I'm not saying we amend the minutes necessarily. I'm saying we just pass a resolution nullifying those three votes, and I presume that doesn't have any effect on the, on the passage. To
my knowledge, all of those votes were non-oh or unanimous votes. Um, so that would be one way to do that, and, and this is where, where, where I will candidly admit, it's a little unclear.
Well, this is unchar, uncharted territory.
Yeah. Can I go into a little more detail, David, about our conversation?
Sure.
Um, to, to go before the Board of Ethics with a complaint, one of the things that the Board can do is make its recommendations. Um, if they find that there's probable cause to believe, uh, um, there was a violation of the policy, then they can also make recommendations, and I think those recommendations would take into account, uh, the, the actions of the council member and the gravity, I suppose, of the matter upon which they were acting. So that's, but at that point, then it comes back again to the council to, to, to decide what action it would need to take. And maybe if it's a matter of, of passing a resolution to, to nullify a council member's vote on, on those particular items that they've identified, that could very well be appropriate if that's in the judgment of the council, if that's what it felt was the appropriate way to deal with it. I can't say that, that it, that there's other things that need to be done or legally required to be done, uh, but that sounds sufficient to me if that is, is that, if that would be the direction the council would want to take.
If we were to decide to do something like that, does that need to be on the agenda or how does that work?
I would, I would make it an agenda item. I would draft a resolution, uh, consistent with whatever the council's decision is, um, and then that would, uh, need to be approved by two-thirds of the council.
Uh, the other, uh, piece is last week's meeting talked about that, um, a couple of us have wives that are teachers, and we make payments to the Aberdeen Public School System. So I am, um, asking for an advisory opinion from the Board of Ethics on whether that's a conflict of interest.
It would have been under last week's proposed ordinance, but it's not under any existing one, because it's money that's no longer municipal funds. The buck stops when the money exchanges hands from the municipality to a business entity, to a school district, anyone else. Then it's out of their hands, it's in someone else's control, so I can't imagine that there would be a possible conflict of interest with that as it stands.
As the way I sit right now, Mayor, I am not taking your legal advice, and I want someone else to determine that. I appreciate your comments, but...
Fair enough.
I'm not, I'm not in a position to accept that, so...
The municipal league is in town this week. Maybe some of the people from that group would be a good reference point.
So I, I guess this is a good time... So I, I guess this is a good time for me to step in then. We have a conflicts policy. Um, the municipal league is not, um, attuned to or privy necessarily to that, that policy. That policy is what we should look to, to try to answer this, and there is a Board of Ethics that can render an advisory opinion, uh, to, to assist any council member if they have a question like that. So, so I think that's an appropriate way if the, if the council or, or Councilman Bunsonus were to move that direction, or if anyone were to have a question along those lines, just make sure it's a very specific request that you put in your advisory opinion request.